Welcome to the September meeting of County Poppy zoning board of appeals. And I hope that's what you're here for. Uh, I'm Dave Tesier, chairman and our members are all here tonight, uh, Nuga Bauer. Yeah, Kevin Sharp. Secretary Sarah LaJudas, David Hale, and their fellow members, Sierra Haynes. Also listed, our attorney, Tim Kreteski, and our code officer, Tim Barra. Also joining us tonight is our town supervisor Renee Rotondo, so welcome. We've got two items on the agenda tonight. First item will be Harrington Homes and the second item is Double Swan Holdings, same as last meeting and never carried over till tonight. Before I start, I just want to make sure everybody recognizes it's September eleventh, nine eleven. It's not a holiday yet, you know, maybe it was quite an event and I'm sure a lot of our school kids were not around at the time, but I think we all were and something quite an event to remember. Just so we don't forget it. I've been to the museum down there and it's quite a thing to visit. Okay. First item tonight is Harrington Town Homes application. Here. For the record, um, application by Harrington Homes for two area variance and to allow a reduction of point six two acres from the minimum of two acres per lot. Required for single family residents in a farm district. As per schedule one sixty-five in the town, resulting in a lot size of one point three eight acres for each of two lots on Waterville Road. X map numbers four oh one one five for lot two and four oh one three two for lot three. Yes, south of fourth three four Waterville Road, which is labeled lot one on the map we're using. We reviewed a lot of material at the last meeting that was submitted. We had a hearing. During the hearings that tonight. And is there any additional information uh, from the board or board is received or? We haven't had. Oh, yes, I think this was mentioned last time. Um, this is a letter uh, to Harrington Homes from the Robert Rodriguez, the code enforcement officer at the time, sent in the May of twenty twenty-one. And I was conversing with by phone with the applicant, uh, probably by telephone as well. And the essence of the letter said, please be advised, uh, we could find no record of the filed final subdivision map for these lots, either at the town hall or county clerk's office. Before moving forward with any plans to treat these lots separately. And is suitable for the building of residential homes, please provide me with proof of properly filed subdivision maps and a filing number if they exist. In the event that you have such proof, please be further further advised that the lots appear to be undersized and nonconforming since they do not meet the lot size requirements contained in the town's current zoning laws. Without the above referenced filed subdivision maps, and given the nonconforming size of the lots, no permits to build will will be considered or issued. And so that's, that's a letter by the code enforcement officer at the time, uh, from the May of twenty twenty-one, and I want that uh, put into our record. I know it was discussed last time, but there is. There is the record. Any other additional information anyone has? Any questions from the board tonight? Yeah. Okay. We are going to open the public hearing and listen to any further comment, um, questions. And and again, it is a hearing, so just your comments and questions to to the board. We'll do our best to answer the questions. If we feel we've heard. There's no further from the the board. We hope to close the hearing tonight. That's that's the plan. And after that, then uh, the board will deliberate on a decision. Um, and before the, as we do that, our attorney, Tim Kreteski, is going to review the five criteria that we discussed leading up to the decision, the final decision, whether the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the community. So first we'll open the hearing and close it, and then we'll go through that discussion and make our decision. You're welcome to stay here for the whole meeting, the whole decision. But you won't be able to speak after we close the hearing.
Chairman, maybe it'd be a good idea for the applicant to put up the desk so we can see what we're looking at.
Definitely. That's good. Is it? Slide it toward you to be seen on the uh, screen. Everybody see that? On there. The little guy's cut off. Yeah, cut off over there. All right. Don't worry about that.
I'm asked a question.
Yes.
Before we start.
Yeah.
Um, based on Mr. Rodriguez's letter from May of two thousand twenty-one. And have you verified whether there was a file subdivision map?
Um, so that was one thing I was going to bring up. Good evening, Tim Coier, I know you're in Romans Land Survey. Um, we did receive the signed approved map from the town. I was looking through this map here. So this was in the town's file. This has been signed by the chairman of the planning board and all the necessary parties. This is a subdivision that was done back in nineteen eighty-six where it created the lots one, two, and three down here on Waterbell Road. When you read all the the recorded deeds and all the necessary documentation for these lots specifically, it actually refers to lot one, lot two, and lot three of this filed sub or not filed subdivision, unfiled subdivision. And it all refers to this subdivision that was uh, signed by the chairman for I talked to the tax department, I talked to county planning, I talked to everybody. Nobody knows exactly what happened after this was signed as far as why it wasn't filed. Um, but we're not able to find an actual file document in the county clerk's office. Um, this is the only one that 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 is of record at this point. Um, again, these three lots down here specifically, lot one right now actually has an existing house on it. Lot two and three are the lots that we're looking at getting the variance for. Again, all identical sizes. Um, again, two and three are existing tax parcels. We're not trying to create new tax parcels. We already have tax parcels. They're existing. They just happen to be undersized per this map. Um, there was another map that was brought up at the last meeting. I apologize, I was not here at the last meeting. So this is a map that was brought in, I believe, by someone from the audience, um, that happened to mention that uh, our lots are up in here. Okay, this map is a filed subdivision in the county clerk's office. However, the subdivision map does not include these parcels. It shows them as an adjacent property. It doesn't include them in the in the overall subdivision. So this was not our lots were not part of this approved subdivision.
What's the name of that subdivision?
This map is broader subdivision, um. What year was that? This was uh.
Nineteen ninety-four.
Yep, nineteen ninety-four.
And that shows your parcels as one still?
Well, it just shows our parcels. It's just labeled as our parcels.
But it wouldn't show them as subdivided lots anyway, um, even if, even if so on, it were up to date because the original subdivision map was never filed with the county clerk.
Okay.
Right? So this is a filed subdivision.
This is a filed subdivision that created these lots.
That's file is eight oh four one, um, so back in nineteen ninety-four. What was the um unfilled subdivision map? So previous, what year was that?
So just to give a little context, I understand that it shows it as one in theory parcel. It didn't draw a line here, but for example, like this lot here is two parcels. They didn't shoot the line all the way up, but it kind of looks like one parcel. It's kind of the same. They just didn't label it properly. Just because it shows it as one parcel doesn't mean they're depicting it as one lot.
Excuse me, but this one's a fact remain that those lots are undersized from the uh.
Can we, can we wait till hearing? Okay, follow your question, please. Are the tax numbers on that as one tax number?
They're just labeling the the owner in a book.
For purposes of this this isn't a subdivision.
Right.
That was reflected in the nineteen eighty-six subdivision map that you showed. So, so it sounds like it went through a process with the town of Poppy in nineteen eighty-six.
I had seen it happen. It's signed by chairman, Dr. Eugene Hickey.
So was he the chairman at the time?
Yes.
So a process was obviously through for him to have signed that now. Who did your client Harrington Homes?
Yes.
Did they purchase it directly from the previous owner?
I believe so, yes. Yep.
Do you know when you purchased it?
I think two thousand nineteen.
I think they purchased February twenty twenty from my notes from last time at least.
Very close to there.
Yeah, I'm sorry I wasn't here last.
So just so everyone's clear, back in nineteen eighty-six, when this map was approved and done, the code was different. The the area per lot was allowed for these sized lots that are depicted here. And then in nineteen eighty-eight, I believe the code changed as far as the area allowed. And because of the code changing, because this map specifically wasn't filed, that was triggering the requirement of the variance. This, if this map was actually filed, we wouldn't necessarily need the variance.
I sure agree with that. That's not entirely true.
You have a question, Tim. What's that? What can I ask a question? What is the statute limitation when if it was, it wasn't filed? So it was approved and signed, but is there a window frame? That it didn't get acted on?
So a subdivision map, I think under section as two seventy-six is the subdivision, probably two seventy-eight. Yeah, that piece of two seventy-nine. I think it requires um, that final subdivision maps be filed within six months of approval. Now, that's what the statute says. I can assure you that that's not always followed, um, and that this county clerk's office will take subdivision maps and file them, even if it's beyond the six month period.
We'd be on the six month.
Yeah. Yeah. And if it were a nonconforming lot, in other words, we changed the zoning after this was filed. There's a vested rights period of, I think, about three years where you can make a claim for vested rights that we invested all kinds of money in this and you changed the law on us, but that's, I think it's three years.
One thing I want to point out is we did reach out to the neighboring property behind us um, back here uh, to see if we can purchase more property. At this time, they're not interested in selling. Um, I guess they have something else going on themselves with the town, so they're just not interested right now. I want to point out that the lots do meet lot width. It's not like we're making them skinnier than they're allowed. They're allowed to be two hundred, so we're not taking up any less room on Waterbell. We have approved subject systems, driveway permits were approved or getting approved in the county. Um, other than simply the lots not being deep enough. These lots are completely fine compared to the rest of lots.
How does that relate again to that other subdivision map? The colored one?
We said right on.
They back up to that.
Yep, we back up to this large parcel.
Yeah. Frontage parcel.
Uh, it technically has frontage down here, backyard, follow here.
So it's a couple very large.
So it's a very large lot. Yes.
All right. Um, I know it's muscles.
The board. I don't know if this, I don't know what this is. But we also talked about when was the two acre building lot put into place? I don't, I don't know if we know that answer.
It was like nineteen eighty-eight. That's what I'm trying to clearly, I'm not sure.
For purposes of the considerations tonight, I don't think it matters because we have already determined that they are nonconforming lots. They don't conform to today's code.
Right. Well, would it have made a difference if the two acre minimum was prior to that? Because if it was in eighty-four, eighty-five, for instance, they would be given approval for the building lots.
I don't think it would because they never constructed on them and you would, you would have to go with the existing code. Um, like I said, there's, I think, a three-year period of vested rights where you could make the claim that um, you invested significant amounts of resources in any project. Um, and you can't change the laws during that period of time.
So the the two acre minimum building requirement, I guess at this point doesn't matter when it was enacted based on that reason.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, I don't believe anything else at this time. Um, I think you guys know everything, uh, again, it is your existing lots that we're not trying to create something that's it just bottoms like this. If the board has any questions for me, I'd love to answer.
More questions.
Could you, could you, the back property know how little that you would like to charge it?
Um, like I said, I think that the owner of the back property has something else going on with the town. Could use things with their current uh, process with the town. So right at this time, they don't want to get invested or involved with something else right now. So it's about a hundred and forty feet of their property that we'd have to purchase per lot to make this two acres.
Then they would have to go through the subdivision.
They would have to go through the subdivision process and all that, yes.
So there's houses on each side of those two lots. How close is all the houses to the property lines on each side of those?
That I don't know. No, there's a house. Right. And then there's a house, I believe, over here. This house is again on a two hundred foot lot and the house sits in here, so it's fairly close.
To the property line?
Yes.
The lot to the right is now a five acre lot.
This is a bigger lot, yep. This is uh, so to come here, these are the existing tax parcels. Yep. Okay. So these highlighted are the ones we're talking about today for the variances. This is the, this thing, uh, lot that's immediately to the north of us. This is the, this is about four and a half acres to the south, let's say. There is a house here. I did highlight a couple other lots that are around us that are under the two, two acre um, minimum that have houses on there, so it's not uncommon in this area. And I will point out that the lots across the street actually have a lot less frontage on um, Waterbell Road. They're actually at like a hundred fifty feet versus two hundred feet. I know that was one of the concerns with the members of the audience as far as how wide and how many driveways were going on there.
Those are in a different.
So they are in a different zoning, yep.
Which zoning goes across the street?
Residential.
And this is not residential.
Okay, anything else for the applicant? Asking questions later and thank you for going in the uh, hearing. Are we ready to open the hearing?
We want to make a motion.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion to open hearing.
What's okay?
Favors say aye?
Aye.
You opposed? Um, so the hearing is now open and uh, rules still go. I guess your comments, questions to us and uh, we'll at least hit them in the minutes and they'll make them part of the record and maybe something to discuss or answer. Yes, I will give us your name and and uh, address.
My name's Helen Bailey. I live at twenty-six seventy-one Ridge Road. Um, I had a question. So how big is the third lot, the first one with the house on it?
It's the same as the other two of these, which is exactly the same.
But so, so that lot's going to be down less than four acres?
It already has a house on it.
Or less than two acres?
Right, it is. Well, there's two lots in green on the right inside our own, by the same people, and the lot directly across the street from it, which puts them over the two, the two acre limit. But and then the house across the street from that is is our lot and that we actually own that entire chunk behind it. There's just some easement that cuts between it. So that's actually like close to four acres.
And and you.
Those, those, my name's James Star. And we're at water forty-three thirty-five Waterville, so that, that those aren't true, truly representative of the character of the neighborhood being less than one point three six acres.
Yeah, well, they are just a taxation map and.
Okay, my next question is the lot next to it is like four point some acres. What's why they're going to come in next and say I'm going to split my land out so I can have less than two acres and build a house next to me?
Well, they could do that.
No, that's, no, they couldn't. They couldn't. They, they can only subdivide like a conforming lot, which would be two acres.
So how did, right, and you said they're not subdivided yet, right?
Well, there is evidence that they have subdivided the lots through a subdivision process. The chairman of the planning board has signed a subdivision map.
But it got filed, so.
It hasn't been followed with county clerk's office.
So but the the time period has expired on everything. So it doesn't seem like he would be able to do anything with that.
Now, that's why he's applying to us to to uh.
Well, I think the action.
This, Mr. Tapsier, Saxsmith, forty-three forty-seven Waterbell Road. Yes. When Harrington received the letter in twenty twenty-one, he actually followed through and provided the information. Are we just doing this two years later?
Yeah.
He never followed through and provided the information. It was requested from the code officer in twenty twenty-one. Is that correct?
Those details.
Were never provided.
They don't exist, so. Uh, there's not a filed map.
He, he's just provided us with a map that shows that it went through a subdivision process. He has not provided.
We have other.
File map because it doesn't exist.
It's exactly, thank you.
Would it be possible to uh?
And your name?
Win Collins, four three three Waterbell Road. Um, would it be possible to reread Mr. Rodriguez's um, report on the two lots once again that you read earlier?
Sure.
Please. I mean, it says very clearly right there, so unless his findings are totally wrong, then uh, I I don't feel that uh, he should be able to uh, two houses on unconforming lots, uh, possibly one which would conform to the uh, planning board's laws in Pompe. I don't think they should be discarded. They were made for a reason. And as stated in the last board meeting, they were made for the health and welfare, where they were stretched to two acres to make sure the water was pure. And a couple other items that the board mentioned at the last meeting might be in the minutes or the notes. But I think it's important to reread. Uh, Bob Rodriguez was a very good man, and I think it's important that that be reread in context of what we just heard earlier.
Well, again, the the key sentences are please be advised that the town of Pompe could find no record of the filed final subdivision map for these lots, either at town hall or at the county clerk's office. And and the applicant has stated they've tried the same thing and not found those maps and I know Tim Barra, he's here tonight and he's looked himself and I don't think he's found any evidence of a filed final subdivision map. But um, so therefore, Bob Rodriguez has said uh, no permits to build would be considered or issued. Now, that's doesn't.
So therefore, my finding would be totally against what you just said.
That's why he's applying to us because he's appealing the decision of the code officer. And that's up to this board to determine that we want to allow him that variance of size.
I'm Eric Schwadees. I have a lot right here.
What's your address?
Forty-three ten Waterville. Okay, right, this is the one, the other side.
Yes, of these properties.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, again, back to the other map which I supplied in nineteen ninety-four, whether it be part of this subdivision or not, it's still shown as one lot. I live here. And there's no way if you put two houses in there, then I'm not looking at somebody who lived on. I don't think Pompe should be an area filled with one acre slot boxes. I think the two acre minimum is representative of the type of housing that everybody wants, where we want to live. If you change this to less than two, as mentioned, there's a whole area back here. There's a lot of others in Pompe. Are we going to have Pompe with a lot of one acre lots and one acre houses? Are we going to continue with the two acre as it's always been with very nice houses? I want to address um, the timing um, of the purchase and the what was and wasn't understood. Oh, and by the way, I'll defer to his knowledge of the three year, three year grandfather. In our research, we found somewhere it's at two years, but either way, it's a moot point. We're twenty years past or whatever it is. I had looked at this, this property forever. I was talking to Elliot forever. Uh, we never could cement the deal, but when Elliot passed, um, it was uh, sold with part of the estate. I contacted the real estate agent at that point in time and noted that, and I brought him that map. And I noted that these were subdivided not according to what the zoning is over here. And it, because it originally listed them as forty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars apiece intending two houses. She wasn't aware of that. When I made her aware of that, they then sold were in the process of selling the property bundled, knowing that if anybody's going to build it, they've got to put them together. So I can only assume that that information was passed along to uh, Harrington when it was purchased. Um, I had spoken with representatives of Harrington several times and said, you got to have two acres, got to have two acres. Um, so this isn't a case of a homeowner getting stuck and wanting to build a house. This is a builder who has plenty of experience, plenty of history and understands the town of Pompe. He lives in the town of Pompe. It's hard for me to believe that you didn't understand what the zoning was with this property. I have, um, there's five things that you're going to bring up later that need to be considered. Um, Dick Gilman, after reviewing some of those, came up with these as um, informational responses to why there's a negativity involved with splitting these into new houses. Um, I do want to say as part of the five, there are alternate solutions. I've had several people stop inquire about properties next door, telling me they would purchase both and build one house. I read, if they mentioned that last board meeting, they contacted Harrington hoping to purchase both and build one house, and they were told that they were going to be marketed and sold as two, which is contrary to what the zoning is. Um, there are five reasons or considerations that uh, we'll hopefully hear from each one of those. Uh, has a, a impact and a negative. uh has a a impact and a negative to the neighborhood. So I think that's all I have at this point. You guys have the map. You have our petition that we had submitted previous. You have a letter from Bob Rodriguez. Um, and as you can see, there's a whole lot of feeling that should a house be built and should be one house and not two. Stand up quick.
Thank you. I'm Sheila Schwadees. Um, though you were, somebody asked how far apart our houses from the property line?
Yes.
Um, while we do have all the acreage, a lot of rock over here, our house is over here.
Okay.
So we are.
Pretty close.
Pretty darn close. So while we have all the sacred here, I have an aerial view of it where the property line is. If you wanna look just on my phone, but if the trees are ours, that marks our property line, and that's the house.
I have my glass one.
By now, it's a smaller apologies.
Okay, so that's your house?
This is our house. That's the property line. Here's Watervale Road. So that's where they'd be building right there, and the septic would be right on the other side of those trees.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, that's awesome.
Hmm. Water, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes.
There is one other thing that somebody brought up after the last meeting as we were discussing it. Um, the D E C might have a concern. Uh, there's a watershed or I can't remember what the specifics were. There's a watershed downstream, I think two more septic's. Close to that waterway, there may be some issues with respect to anything additionally going in there. I don't know if that's. I guess it depends on what your decision is tonight, but that may be something that needs to be considered.
Wow, there actually a stream in your backyard.
Yes, limestone.
And it goes to limestone.
Yeah, but it actually cuts in closer on those two lots than it does from our house. We're further away from that.
That's.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? Anything new? Yes.
I just want to make sure I point this out there, right? Totally understand everyone's concern about multiple houses and putting too many houses on this road. Absolutely justified. Just understand that all we would need is to do this. Wouldn't be here. Two hundred feet is allowed. It's not, it's not that the houses are gonna be too close together because two hundred feet is allowed.
Hmm.
We have the width for a lot. It's just that we would have to grab this land back here. We wouldn't be here. We'd be right into subdivision and we'd go right into building. The fact that the houses can be placed here and here really is a moot point. Uh, and again, the other concerns of um as far as D E C, we already have um septic designs approved by under any health department. So they've already looked at it. They've already approved the septic designs. So again, most of it is, we just don't have this area back here. We have the lot with two houses can go here per code without any issues. Um, I just wanted to make sure that was, I understand if if we were asking to make the lot skinnier, I totally understand that justification as far as the houses being too close together, but two hundred feet is allowed per code.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes.
I'm uh Jeff Hughes, four-three-three-four Watervale Road, I'm lot one.
Uh.
North of the properties in question. Uh, I just have a few comments that I'd like to make in regard to the five factors that are being considered. I tried to do a little educating on on this for myself. Um, from what I understand, the number one factor that's supposed to be considered is how does this benefit outweigh the negatives?
Right.
And so far, I haven't heard any benefit other than Mr. Harrington gets to build two homes. I haven't heard to where it proves in the neighborhood in any way. I've heard a lot of negatives, so I just want to bring that up. In regard to the environmental impact, I think we can all admit, we don't truly know what the environmental impact is. It was brought up last board meeting. That it's not a requirement to get an environmental study, and I understand that. But I think when we we go through those five factors, there's an environmental impact question. We don't truly know what the environmental impact of this will be. Another question is traffic. Safety for the kids in the neighborhood. I brought up last board meeting. It's a very, very high-speed road despite a forty mile an hour pothang. It's notorious for high-speed traffic in both directions. I can tell you coming up over the hill, the neighbors struggle to get out of their driveways. And if we're talking about putting in two more driveways, I just think we don't know the impact on safety and traffic for the kids in the neighborhood. Um. The other factor, when I was looking at the five factors that I, I don't know how important this is, but I saw something about setting precedent. I personally think this sets a a bad precedent. If we allow Mr. Harrington to know that he can buy property, knowing the rules, get the rules changed for his own financial gain just to stop him from purchasing more property in the town of Pompe. And then saying, you granted it for me here. I'd like it here also. Um, but now those are things I just would like to point out as considerations. Ultimately, I don't see much benefit for me. You know, I hope to get some good neighbors out of the deal. I mean, that's about the only benefit I'll get. I'm hopeful for that. And I I don't mind getting some nice neighbors. I have good neighbors already. But other than good neighbors, the only benefit I'm seeing is financial gain for the for the developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question for you, sir. Sir, are you the builder? Have you owned that for a, did you build that house?
No, I purchased my house in the fall of twenty-twenty. It comes with the lot that the house is on. In addition, I have an unoccupied lot just north of me.
On the north side.
Both lines.
Yeah, yeah.
The lot, my house lies fairly close to the property line. I don't know what the.
What's one of yours?
I'm lot one.
Lot one. Do you, do you ever feel that that lot was too small for what you were saying?
Well, not because I have the other lot.
I'm just asking, I mean, because the two words, the same size as yours.
Yeah.
Do you feel you should, you wish it had been a little bigger?
Yeah, okay, yeah, absolutely.
Wait a second, you you have this lot plus this lot?
Yes.
The lot, this is another hundred feet, so that makes it three hundred feet. I don't have enough, yeah.
What's the acreage of that additional lot?
One point three.
I think total.
One point three eight plus.
Point eight, I think.
Another point eight.
How was that house built on one twenty-three?
Built the long time, it's very well.
It was built, I believe, in nineteen eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight?
I believe, I don't know for sure. I think it was late eighties.
All right, so you line, we know what size lot is. It's a hundred by three hundred. What's a hundred by three hundred? Who's gonna ask this?
I can.
Hundred by three hundred. Thirty thousand square feet.
Yeah, that makes, if he thought it's point.
So if you added those two together, you'd be over two acres.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, but that lot one is the same as the.
Right, but yeah. But everybody, everybody does have additional. Frank Lady, both have to make a decision, but that, that's logical. That's why lines should go away.
Yes. I'm fine with that.
Well, obviously, a permit was issued for lot one. Going off of what's decided.
Other than that was probably before the two acre.
Yes.
The three lots were approved, signed, but never filed, but an issue, a permit was issued just with that.
Based on that approved subdivision map, which was never filed with county.
Yeah.
That sometime after that, that two acre law. Okay, but going back to the, you know, we're having a little heartburn over the prior, not prior.
Yeah.
I don't actually see where that makes a difference.
It does make a difference.
It does or does not.
Well, it 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 certainly can.
It's probably a bit more stronger case for the applicant, but even if it was filed, that he still has to be here for the variance, for the two acre.
That's correct.
So there wasn't, there wasn't any construction to keep that relevant for those number of years.
Well, I guess that's kind of my thing is that whether it was filed or not, I don't see where that has any bearing on on the county clerk's night. Unless I'm wrong.
So. If if the map had been filed, those two lots would exist separately as point three acres.
He would still be here.
Then ask for the variance.
What do you, what do you? It could have been filed and approved. Those lots would have been approved for building lot.
But he only had two years to act.
Right, I understand that, but if that had been approved, built a lot, you know, that would have been all done. We wouldn't be here.
But now that nothing was done.
Correct.
That puts us here now.
Yeah.
It's also a different owner. I think you're losing.
Right, no, I'm not losing this, both of us.
Not a property owner who's stuck with an unbuildable lot.
No, I'm, I'm.
Developer.
I'm very unaware of what.
Absolutely knew what he was getting into.
I understand.
Way, and I think it should also be pointed out that he wasn't really too concerned about the board denying his variance.
Well, there's other people have come in front of this board, knowing that they couldn't get a permit, but they still came in front of this board to seek approval to get a variance.
Well, I don't know.
That's why we're here.
I know, but I do do believe that it's um. There are certain developers in this town that know that they can just kind of, I mean, schmooze people and, oh, everything's nice. He knew what he was getting into. He knew there were two different lots, and the only reason, as Jeff pointed out, that he's doing this is because to to make more money.
No, I understand.
That's not a benefit to the town or the neighbors. And, you know, I guess you have to make a decision because, as pointed out, there was a big huge chunk behind that hoopniks were trying to sell, and there was a big chunk up the road by Broadfield. And if all those developers come in and say, oh, we want one acre lots, what do you guys want to do? You've just changed the entire town of Pompe.
Actually, I I understand your concern point on that, but and and we are concerned about the word precedence, but any decision we make does not affect the next application that comes in. It's true.
I don't know what he's there.
I I will say one thing, living across the street, you know, I kind of saw that that original real estate sign go up over there. And for the longest time, before they sold the lot to Mr. Harrington, that that sign was up there. It wasn't two signs for two building lots. It was one sign for one building lot. And it was like that for a long time, year, year, two years. And then, uh, lo and behold, it comes out of the blue, and then the two signs show up. So everybody's going like, what's going on? You know, they don't meet the zoning. But for the longest time, when that first sign was up before he purchased it, it was for sale for just one lot. Not two.
Um. Any other comments and questions?
Like to comment, if you've got two lots and you put two thousand square foot houses on each one of those lots, you got four thousand square foot footprint. You put those two lots together, you've got a four thousand square foot house with a four car garage, a couple of teenage kids, and you got four or five cars in the driveway coming in and out of there. There's nothing different other than the fact that there's one house on one lot. So as far as the traffic issues and as far as the aesthetics and looking out your window and seeing something else, be careful what you wish for. Um. There could be a pretty good sized, nice house off the road there. Uh, on two lots, that could be just as as big and obtrusive as two smaller houses. Um, that doesn't make building a house on one point three acres, right? Just to, just to bring that fact.
Okay, and the other, yes.
I got a question for Tim, the attorney.
We got.
Oh, when, who else? Okay.
Yes, Alma in the audience.
For the town of Pompe code, if it's two acres, I really believe we need to continue with the two acres. Pretty soon, they'll be saying one in a half, one in three fourths. If it's two acres, let's stick with two acres. That's what the code is for. Thank you.
We have your, your name?
Alma Hartnett. Oh, Alma Hartnett, twenty-seven oh three Ridge Road.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I got a question for you. Being the fact that they built on lot one, did that put the ball in motion for that subdivision? Subdivision must have been before the building. The three lots were that put out there for us for the subdivision.
Yeah, I know a little history on that. It's maybe you too.
So the, so they built on that lot. Does that put it in motion? You said because you need the uh the window frame has been over.
Um.
Is it a good question?
Yeah, it is. And I, let me think through that. And um, when we close the public hearing, I can be part of, I'll make a, then all of it.
Um, do we have any other comments before we?
One final thing, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that we're not trying to create two lots. There already are two lots. I understand the precedent. I don't want to set a precedent. I don't think we're trying to set a precedent of creating lesser lots. If we were coming in for a subdivision approval to create smaller lots, I totally would agree with all the concern as far as setting a precedent of smaller lots and this and that, but how often are you gonna run into a place where the existing lots are too small for the code? And that we're just trying to get the existing lots that are sitting there to allow for two houses. We're not creating lots.
But you're subject to the two acre ruling, Father Claus.
Hundred percent.
No. They're asking for a variance to that rule. That's. Um.
Um, it may, I don't know if it objects or not, but originally that salt farmland over there belonging to Phila Lot Smith. And uh, uh, at the time when the uh, the farm resolved, they did, they did subdivide some lots over there for housing, both on Brickyard Falls Road and over on Waterway. Um. Uh, Ron Hoteling, we both know him. Those were his parents. Um, and they, that was done, and I believe the timeframe is right. It was done around in the eighties. So it probably was done maybe when the law was one point three. But the law is not one point three now. It's two point oh. And I agree that uh, I would honestly feel that they they just did it down. I believe the Pompe board down just on the town line between Malia and Pompe and Watervale Road uh approved a house on, oh, like an acre of land or something. Real small house. It's right on the corner. That was approved. Um, so there's, that would be three times on Watervale Road that uh, a lot under two acres, so it's been approved.
The the original size was one acre for a lot of years until we made it two acres.
Well, yeah, but there's a house just got finished uh built by the former Root Brothers down right on the town line. Uh, but it's on the Pompe side, and that piece of property is very, very, very small. We cross from Box House, which is just on the Malia sign, but it's over the line on the Pompe side.
Is that the residential section?
Yes. That's, that is one acres of its residential district. Any other questions, comments? Have we, ready to close the hearing?
If we're closed from an audience standpoint, I would tell you that I struggle with this application because, one, I do believe in the two acres. You know, I, that's a rule that's made for a reason. But on the other hand, we're looking at two lots that are one point three eight with very little disturbance to the neighborhood. We could add to the back and we wouldn't be here. We also have a house next door that's on the same one point three eight. We have potentially two houses that I understand the environmental and the D E C concern, and I agree with that, but they either approve it or they don't. Driveway cuts D O T, they approve them or they don't. So what he'd like to do from a safety standpoint, I feel would go through the proper steps to to be improved. So I I really do struggle with, is this gonna change the community? Is it going, and like Kevin said, you may have one bigger house bigger than the two smaller ones. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts here that I struggle with.
That's why I were listening to you folks to get ideas.
And I, and I just. And I, and I see a lot of comments.
So that we have one bigger house that's going to help raise property values instead of two small ones.
Yeah. And, and I also, I mean, I believe in growth. We, we do need to grow. Go figure out.
I understand the concern with, you know, you don't want somebody looking in your window and you don't want to look at somebody else's window, but it was pointed out, two hundred foot of road running. Yeah, and if they build the house, then you're going to look at each other. The issue here, it's not deep enough. Uh, it's plenty wider enough, it's plenty wide enough. That's why.
That's not our only concern. I mean, we have a shallow well. We've, we've run dry.
I understand that and it's the luck of the draw when you build out here.
You build one house, then two.
I was already built, the neighbor drilled the well, the other one next to me and my well. Took it off. That's the, that's the luck of the draw here. If you're not on water.
That's why the two acre minimum is.
No, and and I understand that.
So you want to, I mean, like somebody pointed out, they were talking about our lot. We could come back here and subdivide ours.
Road frontage.
Want to do and then the guy up the road can that other vacant lot on the other side of us, he bought it from Mr. Smith because he wanted to keep it pristine. He could subdivide that. He probably could fit both three, four houses on that.
He could.
And that is what I'm talking about, the precedent. If you start the slippery slope, you know, then I change everything and the two acre minimum in the agricultural district is out the window.
If he had room to do it with a two acre, he's more, that's his decision. If he's got two acres to do it. And if he wanted to do it, that's, that's the code.
Um.
But he's talking about less than two acres.
Yeah. No, I, I understand the issue going on here. It's, and we take that account and that's why the board did years ago, went with the bigger lot because of the well and septic issue. Your well has to be so far away from the leach field or your septic tank. It's, so if you, your well goes dry, you've got another room enough to drill another well.
If that's only if you change the zoning from agriculture essentially, you've got one acre lots you're building.
Right.
Yep.
I just asked the question just a few. Um. I just, to be clear, is the is there an importance level on the two acre versus the two hundred foot? That we're talking, there's one more important than the other.
I would say so.
Well, that, that'll part of the, that'll be part of the balancing task to determine that, um, you know.
Are they both part of this variance or are we just going with the two acre?
Two acre.
Oh, okay. I, this was confused on that. Because I, I know they meet the, they meet the two hundred feet, correct?
Right.
But they don't meet the two acre and the variance is for the two acre?
Correct.
Okay, so the two hundred feet is not relevant. Yes, thank you.
It's not with the lots one hundred fifty that would make variance a little bit harder.
Sure. Yes. But that's not, that's not what we're voting on.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so the reason why we're requiring two acres because of septic demand, right? And the expansion of septic down the road and I've heard, heard us talk about that a few times.
With the wells.
On the, what would it be, the uh, eastern side of those lots? Uh, you can see a line, I'll, I'll point it out on the map. There's this line that comes down. This is, this is a pretty heavy duty water flow. It comes right down through here on the back. So even if you expand this back here, you're not going to gain any additional space for septic usage, because this is a huge amount of water that's flowing through here, especially in the springtime.
Is that, is that a stream or something coming?
Yeah, and it's runoff from these farm fields, I think. Um, and then you come out, so we've already conceded that this line should go away in, in theory, and that this is a larger than uh, to address the character of the neighborhood. This line should go away and this is larger than the two acre requirement. So that leaves this, this and this as examples of how that would fit into the neighborhood properly being under two acres. And this, this is like I said earlier, I wanted to get up and point this out. Is, this is an easement across here and it actually goes all the way up to there and it's a single owner, similar to this line. So neither this nor this on this hill here, of course, in Waterville would be um, representative of, so you really only have one instance that would be similar. So the majority weighing the effect, the character of the neighborhood, the majority of it is uh, is, is these don't, this and this and this would not reflect the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Your name?
Jim Starwitz, forty three thirty five Waterville.
Anything else? Are you, are you ready to uh, close the hearing, folks? You have a, a motion?
Make a motion to close the hearing. Publican.
That was second.
Twenty seconds.
Are you for a description? If not, I was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, the hearing is closed and uh.
Before we, we move forward, um, I am going to request that um, I meet with the zoning board appeals under an attorney client privilege meeting um, for maybe five minutes. Um, and we will be back. So let's adjourn for five minutes so that I can um, discuss with you um, a legal issue that I want to discuss with you.
Do we uh, vote to adjourn five minutes?
Yeah, so, so we can go into, it, it won't be a lot.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, so we're, so technically under the open meetings law, this is not an executive session. This is a meeting of the board with its attorney to discuss a legal issue. So um, we can just adjourn it until we come back. Again, it should take no more than five, ten minutes.
Okay. So another room.
Yeah. Another room that we can go with that. And I'd like to, I should be there also. We have to adjourn. The adjourn is all geared down.
I'll give you motion to adjourn. Second, second.
A second. It'll, again, five minutes will be, okay. I was a baker.
Any opposed?
Always thank you, Jim.
My wife's cousins read out. Oh, absolutely right.
Right.
Do I have a motion to uh fill the meeting?
Yes, do you have a second? Dave Hill, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, the meeting is reopened. This was uh our attorneys suggesting that we have the meeting.
So. I would suggest that at this point. Um, there are a couple of questions that I have to do some research on. Things of filing of subdivision maps, I suggest that we not make a decision tonight. Moving over to the next meeting. Sorry for everybody uh to have to do that, but uh I'm not comfortable making a decision tonight.
Okay, so. It does like hearing is closed. If we find new information, we can be open to hearing at the next meeting. And uh.
So it it doesn't even make sense to go through the factors right now until I do a little bit of research.
Okay. So given that. What do we do? We're just.
Would you put it out for that adjourned decision to the next meeting?
Which is October. Right, I had one speaking down, I think it's nine. October ninth. Columbus Day.
The full meeting at the.
The verbal legal information.
Is that? Can we beat out on holiday?
And.
There's no prohibition from beating on holiday. So if you want to set a date, it's every day you can do that too. You also have a date. I'm okay with the date.
I'm I'm good with it too. Okay. So it'll be uh Columbus Day, October ninth. Uh, next meeting. Alright, so that takes care of the uh making homes issue.
You need a motor tonight to post through the closing date or October night?
No, I here we go.
I think the the minutes will reflect that um.
Okay.
That point you make a decision.
Alright.
Never heard.
Alright, so we come to the second item on our agenda. Application by double swan holdings. Michael Steel. For area variances for building height increase of fourteen feet, the maximum of fifteen feet allowed to the existing twenty nine feet. And to our building setback reduction of fourteen feet, the minimum thirty three feet. The existing nineteen property of three five seven, the property center road, tax debt number eight oh one twenty three point. Again, we uh during the hearing to to tonight on the meeting. And uh for the meeting, which in new similar to the uh the previous issue tonight. So the first question, is there any additional information that we have received? The applicant or anyone else? Anybody have any extra information on this one? No? Okay. Any more questions on the board? From the board. Where we are.
We need clarification on what the actual variance was, because I thought there was some confusion if we if it was written outright after trying to do math in our head in past time.
I think it's written out, right? It's just kind of confusing.
Okay.
The applicant has some options. Of your your and says a barn is an accessory structure can be five feet from the sideline. Or if the visit that and and as well, it can only be fifteen feet high. The particular building is nineteen feet away, okay, but it is twenty nine feet high. The exception is if you increase your setback by two feet, you can raise the height by one foot. So it's if you if you do the math. You'd either have to increase the setback to thirty three feet. Or reduce the height down fifteen feet. Oh, that's or
no. Just enough because he's already nineteen.
He's nineteen feet up. But he's, if he's going to increase. If the building is fourteen feet too high. So he has to add two feet horizontally to make up for that fourteen feet just too high. So that's twenty eight feet. Plus the five feet minimum. That's required, so it's thirty three feet. We have to make the building be thirty three feet away from the property line.
Point nine foot height.
So those are two options. Uh, for the applicant. And uh he's looking for a variance to keep the building where it is. Yes, it's a variance of fourteen feet in height. Or setback variance of fourteen feet. If that's how it should be worded.
Height variance.
Height variance, height variance of fourteen feet. And and that that's all he needs, right? Because the setback is he meets the five foot setback. Yes, I got it.
So nineteen foot that he is already, yes, what's the highest he can go?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet, that's if he's five foot off the sideline.
He's already nineteen.
He's already nineteen. So he's allowed higher.
Okay.
That's where that's where I was going with that.
Nineteen feet. And
every two feet he's from saying.
He's a one foot higher.
Yep.
So he's coming.
For the first five feet. Fifteen feet for the first five feet.
And he's nineteen, so that fourteen feet more that he's in. So. That's seven feet.
Seven feet of that of fifteen. So twenty two, he's got an E B to seven foot variance.
Yep.
Twenty two feet is where he can be and he's at twenty nine feet.
Okay, so seven foot height variance for the
Mathematically.
Yeah.
He needs seven foot height variance, you have order in building where it is.
Correct.
Okay. Not sure what the next step is, but I think we also had turns only from a height variance, but as well as building use.
But that's not it's not.
That's not an enforcement issue.
That's an enforcement issue. Not as the only part issue.
But and so it's okay to be granting a variance on something for an area when there could be a use issue. But there's not, yeah.
We we don't know what this. We're we're granting us a a dimensional.
Right.
A dimensional um variance, or we're considering a dimensional variance.
Right.
The use is if you can't use it the way they're using it. You can't use it. Um, it it doesn't, that that is a we we and if he's not asking for a use variance.
No.
So we can't, we would never grant a use variance, but um, because they don't meet the qualifications.
Right.
So um if there is a use problem, then that is a code enforcement issue that we'll deal with from a code enforcement standpoint.
Does that code enforcement go through planning or just?
No, the building codes. Enforcement officer.
Okay. And does it make a difference to zoning laws whether that gets dealt with before or after our decision?
No, I don't think so.
No, not really. Okay, just just clarifying timeline.
Yes. Uh, the town is also working on a on occupation law, which might have a bearing on that and until that is in place, I understand there won't be any enforcement.
Use of that particular building.
So that's I'll we'll open the hearing in a minute. Anything else before we open the hearing? Reopen the hearing, which was adjourned to tonight last meeting.
That's the only variance that is put to the board is that potential line where the building is that requires now it's the same position requiring a height on credit.
Which and which could also be taken care of, uh, to be increased in the setback.
Correct.
But the minimum is subdivision height. Uh, any other questions from the board then? Should we be ready to reopen the hearing?
Open it? I guess so, yes.
They hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright, so seconded. Any further instructions? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? Okay, the hearing is open and just like the last hearing, uh we're here to listen, we want to hear everybody, so your questions to us and give us your name and address.
Uh, Dale Sherman, three eight four four Poppy Center Road. Um, at the last meeting, uh, I believe we brought up a question, or maybe it was the lawyer brought up question about uh, the lot depth, was that an issue or not an issue? It was something like two thirty versus two fifty because of building or something.
All right, enough as a concern, I'm not sure, it's it's not an issue of enforcement at this time.
Okay.
Preexisting law, I think, could be a but the code officer's opinion might be. It's just something I I happen to see and notice that. Anything else? How much? Questions? Yes.
Um, my question is, was it approved? Okay, Helen Bailey, twenty six seventy one Ridge Road.
Yeah.
Was it approved already? I mean, before they built it by the town?
A building permit was issued, yes.
So it or it went through the planning for?
No.
So what the so they didn't have approval to build it that tall or they?
The building permit was issued, is that correct?
Yes.
What was that?
No, building permit was issued.
But not for that height.
Yes.
Right. Thanks.
No, it was issued for that height.
Okay, a building permit was issued, it was constructed and is still in violation of town code.
Right.
Even though a building permit was issued, you still can't be in violation of town code.
Yes. So that's.
I was just curious if I, I mean, if I had approved, if I had built something and it's not at the code from years ago, are you going to come back and get mine? Make me take mine down?
That's why, that's why I'm.
I mean, that's that's where we're at at this point. I mean, it's been there. And I mean, if I got a permit and I built something and it's not to code, all of a sudden now we're coming back out and we're making everybody do something about it? I mean, who's paying for it? Or, I mean, I just don't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, you also get a certificate of accuracy at some point to but it's a becomes an enforcement issue with the code officer and uh you should have noticed that uh building is in violation and so applicant is requesting requesting a a variance.
Right.
From us.
I would just give you.
Oh. That's right, thank you. And anybody else?
Do we have a hard copy of that?
Um. Do you have a hard copy of that? Maybe we do. Then you while you were doing it, so. Okay, who is that here? Yes.
Bench court sits up. Thirty eight fifty Pompey Center Road, I'm directly across the road and I sight of where this barn is. I also have a barn that I built, took me like four years, I did it myself. Uh twenty thousand five six seven eight. I came to the uh fill out the application. I might permit, I mean, I I with the height and everything and I was told I had to be so many feet from uh the property line with a certain height, I mean, all my specs were there. It got approved, I built the barn, so that's my concern is what this lady just brought up is maybe I'm out of violation now, I don't I don't know, that is my concern. Maybe when I go to sell the property and I want to go to warmer weather. I could be held hostage, eh? Violation, so that's that's uh where I'm coming from. Uh, it it was approved. And back then, a guy that was the zoning person doing something and I told him he was supposed to come and check the hole that it was four feet deep, but you know, I put holes in.
Yeah.
And uh he asked who was doing it and I said, well, I'm building it, but I'm having Bruce Cook, who used to be on the top of the world and uh he said, I don't need to come and see it. Well, I insisted he come and see because that was the part of them, then he did, he he only needed to see one and uh, okay, so but but he was not going to come and see it at all, but I don't know.
Did did he come back for a completion inspection?
I I don't remember coming back for anything. Anyway.
Code enforcement's got a lot better than the last two years, especially in Pompey, so.
Yeah, so now are they going to come back and say, hey, you never found it, where's the records?
Not unless not unless it's a reason to come back, so maybe if it collapses in four feet of snow. Now you may have a question, but
so we're we're not out looking to uh
find issues, we got plenty of. Yes.
Um, Helen Bailey, um, so how how does this come about then? If you're not looking for.
I neighbor complaint. So that's that's how we find out about a lot of issues. Anyone else?
Yes. Uh, I just wanted to clear up Mike Steele, I'm the owner of thirty eight fifty seven Pompey Center Road.
Yeah.
Um, just wanted to clarify for you guys. My my sons are one percent owners in the LLC that owns this and we were at one of our meetings when we went out. And we talked about, well, maybe we can uh store some vehicles or something, so my son got uh a little adventurous and threw in the head and um marketplace, I think it was. Uh, for for a week and John sent something to Tim, Tim nearly sent me a letter and I assured him I sat down, jumping on, I know I can't store vehicles. I don't store vehicles for a fee there. I have some friends that store there. I have a lot of equipment myself. I own a lot of vehicles uh myself. And that's what I use it for.
Okay. Thank you.
But but Tim did, John said, and I told him that I wasn't doing.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments, anything new? No, you're here before, most of you. If there if there is anything. Close the hearing, but um, you're thinking, I know.
I'm thinking.
We lost.
So I uh so I have a question, how um or you were or?
Very discussed, yeah.
Uh, so um if he has a commercial business, it's storing the equipment, isn't that commercial equipment then? Or is it personally owned equipment?
Don't know.
Oh, that's that's why I was curious if if we don't use the structure to store commercial equipment.
Not commercial equipment, if you if you use the building to store other people's equipment.
Oh.
Or for a fee.
But.
Then it's a commercial enterprise and it's not a lot of that.
But if you have a commercial business, but you store your equipment there, that's that's a personal store, is that? It's, that's the question.
It's his business equipment.
It's his business equi- okay, well. Is it your business equipment?
My business is owning emerging properties. I have owned a lot of equipment to help me in doing it.
Okay, well, that that'll be that'll be in it, that'll be a decision for a code enforcement officer. Ultimately, he has to make a determination and an interpretation of our code to um to make.
Thank you for clarification.
Well, then that's Mitch Gore's, that begs another question then. I have like personal equipment, but it's like it's like commercial equipment, I mean.
When when he says commercial equipment, he means equipment he's using for his business. So you have commercial.
Maintain my my property, my daughter's property, sometimes I go to the neighbors.
That's not a business of yours.
How much does your daughter pay you?
She lets me sleep by granddaughters.
That makes it not commercials.
We're reaching way over on this.
Yeah, yeah.
You own you own tractors or whatever, it helps you maintain your property.
Yeah, that's right, I it's. Affordable fit to that.
Um, the owner to the self. Have you met with Mike? Yeah, I couldn't remember. Have you met with Mike to rectify any of this to try to?
Not, we we didn't really discuss this issue, uh, it's kind of.
Let's be honest, how am I going to rectify this? This building is up, concrete's. Yeah, I mean, this is this is a stamp thing, it's just twenty eight. It's a way to stamp that where it's not told by someone. Barn. I'm going to have somebody build it for me. And this is this whether he knew it or not. We've got a code enforcement officer who received an application with with information. With correct information that was not code.
Right.
Didn't help itself. The fact that somebody said uh to do the law is this. And you follow that. And it happens not to be the law, doesn't base law will show that that's not an excuse, even though somebody gave you bad advice, that's not an excuse not to follow the law. In other words, we can still enforce against that decision. Ultimate question is going to be whether the benefit to the applicant in granting the variance of seven feet in this case outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood and that's 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 your job, right? That's what you're supposed to be concentrating on. Um, and can you consider the fact that a building permit was granted in this case as part of the analysis of to uh of whether or not the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the community? Sure.
But we did have, we have a new new code officer in the new situation and the uh the building does not comply with our our zoning. So we're have that problem.
And you not mostly due to the fact that it wasn't a little bit of truth, it it was gross.
Yeah.
Like that's, it wasn't a foot, it wasn't an inch, it wasn't it was it was brought to our attention and and not only at this meeting, but outside this meeting. And I don't know if any other board members were approached as to how that got built. And I you know, I shook my head, I said, I I have no idea. Is it too high? Yeah, of course it is. Does it mean code? No. And so they look at me and I I you, here's the ball, you know, go hit it. And so that's what they did, they came to the they came to town and said, this this building is not too code, it's new, it's too big, it's it's huge, it's not, doesn't fit in with, those are the things that they would that we need to make that decision as a board. We were, we were essentially approached, so there was a community member or members that made that observation and said, hey, this is wrong. Somebody's got to do something and so they stood up and did what they had to do. They came to the town and made a statement. Now a code enforcement officer does his job. Goes investigates and finds out that we are, we're too tall. However, here's a document that's been stamped and granted by a code enforcement officer that no longer.
By a code enforcement officer that no longer works here.
We still have a variance.
I mean, Kevin always asks the same questions. People knowing where, what, by expanding this in Poppy, zoning officer. That barn's gotta be too big. I don't know, I am not the enforcer. If you have a problem, if you think there's a violation, we have, go to the town board and say something. It's, it wasn't my job to walk into property with a tape measure. So, and uh investigated.
So at this point, I mean, all of those things are going through our heads as to, I don't care what you're using it for right now, all we're dealing with is. A height variance or side yard setback, depending on where.
Right.
So.
So we've all seen the barn, so if you lowered that barn seven foot. And you're at mine, would it still be too big sitting there?
Not according to code.
To the pub, right, to the public, seven foot shorter, the roof down. But it'd still be. Too much of an eyesore.
Because it wouldn't be code.
But it would be code.
Yeah, and it would still have the same footprint.
All right. Being very theoretical here.
Not your neighbor would get more sunlight or something.
Further comments, questions?
I guess. If it was. I don't know what the. Number of feet is from the property line to get to that height, what did you have to beat?
Thirty two.
Thirty three feet.
You can be five, five feet off the side, you can be fifteen feet.
Right.
For every two feet that you come in, you can go up another foot.
Oh, all right, yeah.
Two, two in, one up, right.
Yeah.
So he, if he's five, you're five feet off your property. He can be fifteen feet.
Okay, okay.
Goes to seven feet, he can be sixteen feet. He goes to nine, I mean.
Yep, yep.
Just keep going.
Got it.
Right now, he's not, not there. He's still odd.
He's at fifteen, what is he at now?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, so he were uh sixteen feet further. Away from the property line, that building can stay just like it is. An additional.
So uh. The, I guess the question.
Sixteen feet.
Or I would uh.
Sixteen, thirty five.
Like to ask is, all right, so would have had uh lowered it. At that particular uh, at the end of that barn and, and kind of ramped it up. Does that meet?
Probably. At that ratio, two to one.
Yeah, yeah.
Possibly.
I would, I think, I'd be asking the questions, no load and, you know, pitch and all that stuff, that may, that may not be. Appropriate, but you're, you're mathematically, your answer is yes.
It's up to an engineer to design, you know, come up with it. That'd be a tough way to re, rebuild it, but.
Yeah.
We can look. You got the right idea. I look a little silly.
I mean, if you gave him the variance. I mean, if he did some landscaping and put some trees up, kind of made it so that you didn't see it too much of the road. So it wasn't such an eyesore.
It's not the road that's the issue, it's the side lots.
Well, I, I, I've driven there and looked and they got pine trees and everything up on their side of the.
But we, this, this board can uh. Do three things, we can. U- approve the application, or we can deny it, or we can approve it with conditions, so we can consider some.
Yeah, that's, I was just looking.
And typically, the, the, that's why I ask next door neighbors or the owners across the road can. Suggest some kind of mitigation to the size of the building, so I, I think you were next.
Uh, yeah, Bill Sturm again, uh, I'm just curious what uh. Ryan's uh. Preference would be if he were to make a variance to the building, would you rather see it shorter or further back?
Uh, definitely further back, but uh, yeah.
And, just curious.
Yep.
Um, and this is a tough, I mean, you bought the house without seeing it first.
That's right.
Yeah. And maybe. Yeah, maybe I should give some thought, is there anything you can do to mitigate the view of it or that, so. And you, you had your hand up, so.
Yeah, a couple of things, I keep hearing the term eyesore, I've had a lot of people say that's a beautiful building and I've done a lot with that property. It's in my text, it certainly reflects.
Nice barn, it's nice barn, it looks really good, so.
Uh, and I do have landscaping in the front and you have to allow it some time to grow. But I, I do have landscaping to try and to beautify it. I, I don't know, it's, I thought about trying to do something, I don't know of anything I can do that's gonna help Brian.
There's, there's nothing with regard to the percentage of your, if he's got one point nine four acres here.
Yeah. Two acres, but. Existing.
I mean, they, I don't know if this leads to something down the road or opens people's eyes to what you can build that, I like this, this. How many square feet can you build this structure? On a given room size. Without it looking.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't. We don't write a bird attempt, but there is no lot coverage.
No.
Requirement for a residential property.
You can cover your.
There's just setback requirements.
It could be, but there's not.
There's not.
Well, there's not, yeah, I, and it would be unusual, frankly. I don't, I represent a lot of municipalities and. I don't know that there are ever lot coverage requirements for residential lots, like there are. There are requirements, there, there are restrictions on how, how many accessory buildings you might have or, but. You, and the, the way we handle lot coverage. I mean, on residential properties is through setbacks.
Yeah.
If that were a house that was that tall, people still have the same issue.
Yeah.
Same sidelines.
This is not, it's far, but it's an accessory, it's a farm, right?
Yeah.
And we keep saying residential, we're still farm, it's name.
No.
No.
Secondary structures, accessory structure.
I thought I had been. Sorry, I, I tried to read through some of it, I saw something somewhere about accessory buildings not being allowed to be larger than the primary residence. And I wasn't sure what was applicable to. So now that's residential or.
I think that's residential, I think that's the residential structure.
Yeah, because agricultural, big barns.
So if this was residential, you saw it.
It's not residential.
Correct. Any other comments, questions?
So if you, we, you know, make a.
Your last name.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Y W O R S K I.
What do you say?
I don't have any more questions.
Uh, I guess, I'm sorry, uh, I, I, so, so, you guys were talking about the use. Uh, and whether or not it's relevant, sounds like maybe it's not relevant for variance, uh, but I guess. You talk about the benefit of the variance, isn't it relevant if they can actually use the. The building for what they intend to use it for. Uh, like what's the benefit of having the variance if you can't use the building for its intended purpose?
He is using it for its intended purpose, basically for storage.
Uh, is, oh, so last time we talked about it being a rental property, uh, and it had come up that since. Not living at the residence, it's, it's supposed to be for the rental. People, uh, the people that are actually like living there.
Well, it's a necessary structure to the house.
Right.
So are you, so I, I don't know that anybody has made the determination that.
Jamie talked about that.
I, I don't know what she said, but um.
He basically said the. The person living at the residence is the one that's supposed to be using accessory structures. Which we were all like.
I, I don't know that, I don't, I, again, it would be a, an interpretation of the code by the code enforcement officer. I don't know that that's the code enforcement officer's view of it, I don't know that there, there's no, I'm not aware of any statute that says that. I don't think our code says that, I don't think our code says that. It's a necessary structure only to the person living in the house, but I'll look at it right now, see what it says, as there's a definition of accessory structure.
Might that be for residential? Might be something in our residence.
Yeah, maybe that's separate, that would make.
But again, this is. Farm district.
Is there any way? Mike, do you see any way of dropping that?
Not unless you want to pay for it.
Oh, no way.
He doesn't have to pay for it.
He's not paying for it.
There's no way you're gonna change the structure, design of that without ripping it down and redoing it.
So the question is, if you, you could shorten it.
But.
So if you, if you not where the can, I'm hurting to and everything, you're gonna talk a lot of money. It's one of the consequences, if you approve it versus denying. And way the applicants, if you approve it. He's got a twenty nine foot building. A lot, fourteen feet away from side yards, something. Or nine, nine feet, nine way down inside here, so. So how many people in this community will, will appreciate that? If you deny their request. How do you fix it?
What the Poppy and the lawyers.
It's gonna cost some money, money is not. Supposed to be this board's issue.
That's why I made the comment. Or say, if you shortened the building, or lowered it. Would it make that much difference of seeing that barn sitting there?
That's.
Right, I agree, and that's like.
Visual. Would it make that different?
The first week it would, then you'd never notice it.
Like a cell tower.
Yeah, whoops.
But that, that is a very good. Discussion point under the, under the criteria we're gonna be reviewing, so maybe we should close a public hearing and start reviewing them.
I think so. Still, I'm in favor of closing a public hearing, but. I give you less than one last chance, again, you're welcome to sit, listen to us, that's fine. We may have questions. From some of you, especially from the Africa as we go through our discussion, but. Um, once we close the hearing, uh, you're not allowed to speak. So. We have a motion to close the hearing.
Are you motion again?
Second. I'll second.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion, Matt, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed. Now we deliberate, oh, so now we go through our. Area variance criteria. Which are uh. Five conditions are whether benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. Whether the. Variance. Result in an undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties, whether the variance. Request is substantial, whether a request will have adverse physical environmental effects. On whether alleged difficulty is self-created. So we need to consider each one of those and uh. Our attorney's gonna walk us through those and the.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's keep in mind what we're doing, right? We have to make a determination as to whether or not the benefit to the applicant of granting a seven foot variance in height. Outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood or the community. If you granted the seven foot. Height variance, right, so you're balancing. The negative impact of a seven foot height variance on a neighborhood with the benefit. To the applicant of granting the seven foot variance for height, okay, anybody understand that? Okay, so. And, and a lot of the things you've already been discussing, well, I want to hear now, um, in, in light of the context of these questions. It's a balancing test, you can give whatever question, the weight you want to give it. In other words, you could say, this is the most important thing to me, I'm gonna give most weight to question number one. Or question number three, or question number five, please feel free to say that. When we're going through these questions. Um, and you could say, you know, question number two. Really, I don't give much weight to it all because of these reasons, okay?
Got it.
Got it, all right, so the first question is whether. Uh, an undesirable change would be produced in the character or neighborhood. Or a detriment to a nearby property by granting a seven foot height. Variance to a building that frankly is, is in existence now and already impacts, so. Um, what, what are your thoughts on that? Does the, do you believe it will? This granting of the seven foot variance will um, produce a char, a change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby property?
It's, and we have to think in terms of. If the building weren't there. In a way. But we're asking for a variance, it will allow this.
Yeah. Agree, the building was seven foot lower than it is right now.
Yes, okay.
So, can we, can we do the, can we go through the. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant first.
True. Which, which number is that, because that's number two.
My list is number two. My card is different than my list.
Just to identify what, what it is.
That's no.
Sure, well, you, we can go in any order you want to go.
Just so that we set just a ground, like a ground rule thing that he built this thing, he, he had it in his mind, he's got rental property, he built this.
Right, so, so Kevin, you may very well say, number two is the most important question to me, and that's the one we should start with. And if that's what you want me to do, that will be what we do. Let's start with the, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. Okay, let's start with that. What are your thoughts on that, Kevin? I think he could have built a smaller barn and could have, whatever he's got stored in that, which we don't know, we're not privy to walk in there, maybe it's a miss. To walk in there and say, you know, you, you, you've got commercial equipment in here, you've got whatever it is you got in here. Is. You're storing it to your benefit, you're, this, this is way outweighing your benefit to the, the community. The size of this building is definitely. Your advantage.
Not the size, the height of the building.
The height.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. So, but right now. Right now.
Can you change it?
That's why I was asking. That's the question.
And I don't think feasible, no.
It, you'd have a lot of expense.
Building wasn't built, then he was asking for seven feet variance.
And that's a different.
That's a different question.
Right, wouldn't be here.
Right, right. That's what it's asking, right?
Yeah, he said, it can't be done.
That's what it's asking, right, feasible for him to do something else. So I'd say not realistically, right?
But I agree.
So it's not feasible to. To alter the alteration of the building.
I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with that.
Okay.
Now, it's, I don't know what the building costs. To, to remove the section, reduce it, yes, it's gonna cost money. Might be feasible.
I agree.
You think it's feasible?
Yeah, you can, you can do anything with enough time and enough money.
Let's just, that's what we're saying.
Why, why feasible?
Right.
That's a few.
Feasible may not be feasible.
Right, right.
I mean, you, you need an experienced construction guy to come in here and tell you what it would cost.
Okay, I would, I would say based on the building being up, being up and in place and in use and all that, I, I don't see it in my mind feasible. It's, it's not feasible.
Okay. So it sounds like the majority believe it's not feasible to um. Altitude, reduce. Height or, or frequent length.
I'm, I'm looking at a figure here, maybe I should, that building was a hundred sixty five thousand, was that the estimate for?
Back then.
Back then, right.
Plus, plus the concrete.
Yep. Would hire a crew to come in, scaffolding, boomers. Unfold it. Shorten it or higher, lower it. Shorten it or higher, lower it.
Well, that's a lot of money.
It's, that's why I build the house. Because it was easier to build a house than tear one apart.
And I, and I think it probably could be added also that. This is where the issue of a building permit hadn't issued for this.
And I think that weighs on the last one, I don't move on or not, but whether it's self-created or not, I think. I, I don't know, go back and forth on this one, it's self-created and I think we all should have personal responsibility of looking into this, is what it comes back to, um. On all these cases we look at, but he also did get that.
Alright, so let's, let's move to that question, if you don't mind, we'll move to that, was whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Um, I think Sierra's point is, wasn't self-created in the sense that he was issued a building permit for this to construct the building that he constructed.
It didn't have to build a barn at all, it didn't have to build it that big. But self-created, I understand it, no issue.
Okay. David, hell, what do you think?
He came to the board, he came to the town, build a barn. We're not here to say, no, you can't build that size, but we, now, yes, it's too big. But we're not here to sell, tell somebody you can't build that size barn if you've got the brat peak. I mean, why do you need a barn that big? I don't know, someday maybe the board will come up with something like that, you're only allowed to build so big of a barn. But if you got the property. A self-created thing is. We created as lot, as much as he did.
Kevin, what do you think?
Okay.
I, I don't believe Mr. Scale, what, so are your variances were, what the code was? And when he submitted these plans to. The town or. My code enforcement officer, I, I just, I don't, that's a big swing and a miss. It's just a big swing and a miss, I know, but, but come for it, yes. Alright, so, and that person's not here.
You're leaning, you're leaning toward not self-created.
It. If I'm going to do something and I'm relying on somebody telling me that, yeah, okay, Dan, what do you think?
Um, this is the first time that I've ever said it's not self-created. And every other zoning question that's.
Yeah, usually, yes.
Except this time.
If he had came in front of us before the barn was built. Oh, said.
Yeah.
They would say that would be self-created.
Right.
He's trying to build something that, that it's a non-comformant.
It was fifty fifty or ninety ten, but it's not self-created.
I mean, where is, where, where's the code enforcement officer, where do they sign this, where do they, how do I know? And Stan?
Well, he signed off on it.
Where?
Just the application.
The footer, with the ten, eighty? Eighty, eighty. And he signed off the footer?
Alright, well, uh, if you go down through the permit.
Only anybody's questioning the fact that a building permit was issued.
Alright, should we go to number one again, or could we, okay? Uh, whether, whether the, whether there will be an undesirable change produced by the, in the character of neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties.
First. I think now the building's up, and when I drove by it, it looked really, really big, and I was like, wow, holy mackerel, yes, it looks nice. Um, if we don't give the variance and he takes seven foot off the height. It's not gonna look any different.
That's where I was going with it. The barn's already up, make it seven foot shorter of the roof. Or pulling back on the end of it. Well, uh, what do you need, thirty feet? You'd have to go two stalls. It's seventeen, fifteen now.
After a week, you won't even notice he did it. If it could be done.
But I understand the concerns of other people that were here talking, hey, I built a barn done years, twenty years ago. Guy come out once. Yeah, you're good.
And so it sounds like at least the majority of people believe that. Even if the. Even if they were, were shorter, it wouldn't make a difference in term of.
The footprint.
Impacts on the neighborhood. Anybody else wanna fly in on that?
That's a tough, that's a tough.
Yes.
It might make a night, and I'm sure it'd make a difference to the, I think this, the, the new neighbor.
Okay. As a requested variance is substantial. Seven foot variance on twenty nine foot heights, so in other words, it could be twenty two feet. Right now it's twenty nine feet. It's not necessarily mathematical calculation you do, um, it also is in terms of the impact, we get the visual impact of which we just kind of discussed. What are your thoughts on that?
So we, with what the setback is, he's allowed twenty two foot high right now.
Twenty two foot high, yeah.
Yeah. So if you're driving down a road, you look at twenty two foot or twenty nine foot, can you tell a difference? You tell seven foot difference?
I don't think Sierra believes you can.
I would say seven over twenty two is thirty three percent or thereabout, so I think that's a significant number.
Okay.
Yes, I do too. Also, it's, it's a lot.
I think mathematically, it's a lot, but the difference in visually, seven feet coming down, I don't. Again, with it already being there.
Lower the roof seven feet, it may look silly.
You'd have to lower the wall too, you couldn't squat the roof anymore for snow load.
Right. That's what I meant, well, yeah, it's not the question.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be cold.
Right. So. Yeah, we're gonna, it looks, it sounds like a majority is saying that it is a substantial variance in terms of mathematics, but in terms of visual impact, it's not, um. Substantial impact or substantial difference, but we're gonna go with a yes on that, because that's sort of. Then the final one is would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood? This is very similar to line in terms of the characteristics, but, you know, it, it really means more environmental and.
Only if the water is. Yeah.
Would be the tile around it, what, how is it? What, what's, what's the water catching mechanism for the building?
Uh, the building has gutters.
It does have gutters, okay.
Yeah, I re-drained the whole property, because I.
I know you.
Yeah, Jones coming off my.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a lot of underground drainage, drains to the, um, ditch.
I don't use the term French drain, uh, we used to call French drain, just a drain.
Drain tile.
Yeah, drain tiled and.
But I think there's this solid pipe going to the ditch, right? I mean, perforated picking up under the building and then it drains to the ditch.
You headed the water off also coming off the hill.
The, the only place it's solid would be right towards the ditch, it's all perforated.
Right, rest is all perfect, okay.
Okay, so the water's caught by the gutters and directed to the ditch, to the.
There's no impact.
You drain a ditch. Alright, so then the answer to that would be no.
Have you, I guess, sorry, can't recall your name, neighbor, have you had, no, uh, Brian, yes, have you had any issues from?
Uh, we've.
That.
Been there.
Oh, yeah, good rain.
Right, we just had good rain, yeah, the past couple of weeks.
I don't see where you notice any difference in terms of drainage on your property from that?
Uh, I can't say that I won't. So.
So you didn't know.
Yeah, usually if there's a big impact, you're gonna be like, oh my god, that water's off the roof going right into my yard or something. It's a tire, okay.
Okay, so based on. This discussion. It appears that at least four out of the five questions are. Oh, in other words, the impact on the neighborhood would not, um, be so detrimental that the benefit to the applicant. Be, um, wouldn't prevail in this type case, so. Uh, the only question is the substantiality of the, um, variance, and. There was even some question as to whether or not substantiality is. Really good term for this some of the means.
Irrelevant.
Yeah, so. So based on that, based on that discussion. Um, it would appear that the benefit of granting the variance outweighs the detriment to, um, the seven foot variance outweighed the detriment to the neighborhood. Um, based on the answers to the questions. Charlie?
Yeah, I, I wish it weren't there, I wish it weren't as big as it is. Um. Be nice to reduce it by two feet, but I know that's expensive. It is a real good-looking building. Question about that.
Whole property actually is a lot nicer than what it was over the years.
Yes.
It's what you'd have to be on the barn also. Yeah, nice. You're the real, I went to school with Stan.
Yeah, as I said before, I know all. All the party. Also, I live there now, and all of them that lived there before that, but. Um, I go by it almost every day. Um.
If there was a. Rope, if there's a hydro. In here. When you.
It's gonna plant a hydro.
Yeah. Or at least for the neighbors.
A hydro.
Well, I don't think that's gonna. Yeah.
Yeah, you'd still see the roof of it. I mean, if you had some of the making now, now it's, it'd take a while, that matured enough.
Are there any conditions that, um, this board, this board has?
One reason I asked the, the owner, you had any thoughts on that?
Is the light, is there lighting on it, is there? Is there?
Uh, I, no, I don't think there's.
There's no light pollution that's.
I, I did that for that reason, I didn't want to bother Joan with lights, I didn't put windows on that side. I've got a very neutral color, it's not a blue building or a red building or, you know, I was trying to get something that would fit right in there. Uh, she wanted me to cut the pine trees down, I said, Joan, think about that, I don't think that would be what you want.
Yeah. I know. There is quite a bit of green between. That house and.
It's, it's my main concern, it's like, it is a, it's a very nice barn. Yeah, it's very nice right now, I, I don't know what it's gonna look like in five, ten, fifteen years.
Right.
Uh, but, but maybe my main concern.
If it sells, basically, advise it, but if it's somewhere else, rents the property. The rental property, that building are all part of it.
Yeah, given that it's well-maintained, like.
At this moment.
That, that's, you know, it's not, you know, it blocks our view of the road, uh, you know, it's kind of annoying, I, my daughter just.
You see the road, you can, you can pull out already, right?
Oh, our viewer, I believe, the house, the view of the road.
Or looking down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can't see the slowest.
That's right, yeah.
It used to be.
I, I didn't used to be able to, but I thought that, Jordan used to be able to, uh, so, I, I mean, you know, there's those, yeah, no fixing that, obviously, uh. It sounds like, um, but, uh. Yeah, no, my main concern is like the long-term. Means of the thing, um, which I don't know if that's anything that can be considered here consistently.
That's an issue for every building that's built in the town, uh, whether.
Yeah.
Or maintained, but those are code enforcement issues, that people aren't maintaining their property. Correctly, you can always make a complaint for the code enforcement.
Yeah, there's, there's code, there are minimum and numbers like, you know, right now it looks, it looks good right now, uh, you know. Big, it, it looks good.
The whole property looks good.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Just.
I, I can't see any particular issue around here that. I guess since it's in place, that's, it's very hard to say. Um. No.
So.
Does somebody want to first condition, you mean?
As far as.
Yeah.
Benefit to the.
Oh.
Half of the areas is detrimental to the. Community.
Well, I guess what we're left with now is somebody needs to make a motion to grant the seven foot variance for, uh, the height of the property owned by Double Swine Holding out position.
I will make more. Great variance, seven feet, so height variance is seven feet for the existing applicant.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, okay, so made in second to. Prove the application for the variance. As stated. Um, we need roll call vote and. Should give a, some kind of reason. Based on. The five items we discussed.
I think the reasons are stated and, uh. You wanna say something?
To add to it. So, roll call vote, start with it, Dan.
Well, I, I made motion, so I'm in favor of granting the variance, and as we went, as Tim walked us through all five questions. Um, as much as I wish the barn wasn't that big, and I wish it was not as tall as it is. I can appreciate the fact that he was given the okay, stamped okay by full enforcement. Um, and to change that at this point, the detriment of changing that. Is not a significant improvement to the community, so. I'm in favor of granting variance.
Hey, Kevin? I'm not in favor of granting a variance. Seven feet is significant, I think it could have been done by other means, um. But enforcement officer messed up, we have no control over that decision. What's done is done, but that doesn't mean that I have to accept. A variance of seven foot height variance, but I'm a no.
I'm gonna agree with Kevin on this too, I'm just not in favor of it. Um. Pretty building, but I, I think it's too big. Uh, thirty percent increase mathematically, uh, in height. Um. Could be changed by reducing the end, it's. Cost money, that shouldn't be our, our issue. Um. So based on those two factors, I'm gonna say no.
If this came in front of us before that barn was built. My decision would be no. Because the barn is already built. Finances shouldn't be questioned here. But I do think the barn would not. Change the character if it was shortened or lowered. To the community, it's already out.
I'm gonna go with the yes.
Hey.
Yeah, Sierra. I'm going to say yes also, I agree that if it had came before. Uh, there's a big difference in lowering seven feet versus it not being there at all, so I don't think the seven feet would make a huge difference. We were talking about it not being there, then yes, that's a big difference, and also. Playing heavily the fact that the permit was given, although I, like I said before, I think we all should take some sort of personal responsibility in looking into these rules, whether it's. Needing to have two acres or what your setbacks are, but in the end, you were given that stamp of approval to move forward. So the feasibility to me of changing it is not there.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a vote of, uh, three yeses, two noes. So the motion, so the motion carries three to two. Yep. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, um. Thank you for your patience. Your community and, uh. Your input. Um. That's it, I think, Eric. Uh. Let Gordon know or get one other item. It will probably not better next meeting. Or a. Book mounted. Yeah, so. Continuation of the.
And this is our.
This one needed this. So this one needs a variance. Yes. They're residential, they're residential.
Okay, that person. Right? No?
How, I'm a brute, I'm existing, no, Brad, since Bruce.
I appreciate your consideration and and the input. I wish I hadn't, didn't have to come here. And I would build it different if I was there, but.
Yeah, thank you.
We understand that. Thanks for your patience.